Planning and zoning commission for the city of Granbury will now come to order at 6:00 PM on Monday, December the 11th, 2000, Granbury City Hall, City Council chambers. Before we start our agenda tonight, one of our P&amp;Z members down here on my right, at the very end, Mr. Skip Overdeer, has been elected to this Granbury City Council. So, we want to thank him for his time of service to our Planning and Zoning Commission. And since he will see this agenda next, he will now be done with his duties with P&amp;Z. So, thank you Skip very much for your time on P&amp;Z. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, first agenda, things on the agenda tonight, we do not have any non-public hearings, so we just will go straight to the consent agenda. Do I have any questions about the four items on the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There are a motion by Mr. Erdman to approve the four consent agenda items. Do I have a second?
No, second.
Second by Mr. Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is D1 tonight. Consider request of the city of Granbury to amend select sections of the city of Granbury zoning ordinance. Amendments proposed are to Article 1, General Provisions, Section 1.7, Creation of Building Site, Section 2.3, Amendments, Section 4, Permitted Uses. Amend select certain, select sections of the city of Granbury subdivision regulations. Amendments are to Section 1, Provisions 1.12, Variants, and 1.15, Right to Deny Hearing, 2.4, Procedures, Procedure for Approval of Preliminary Plat and Submission Requirements, 2.5, Procedure for Approval of Final Plat, 2.6, Amending Plat, 2.7, Minor Plat, 2.9, Development Plats, and 2.10, Replatting. The general purpose of the amendments are to ease the use limitations for certain uses, shorten review timeframes, and offer administrative actions. Kira?
Thank you. Members of Planning Commission, Chair Kay, I'd like to turn the presentation over to our consultant, Mr. Craig Farmer. He is knowledgeable in this area and has been helping with the zoning ordinance as well as the subdivision ordinances. You'll note in our packet that we're recommending a continuance or postponement of the subdivision part until our next meeting, but moving forward with the zoning ordinance, short-term rental components. So, I'll turn that over to Craig and he'll go over the proposal with you.
Just got to be smarter than the technology. So, there's a really long advertised item that you have. The next slide, I've gone through and removed everything except Article 4, permitted uses. That's the reality of what we're suggesting tonight. The plating ordinances, changes to that, Ms. Wowie suggested, and I think rightfully so, that the other department heads probably need a little more time to look at it. Plus, we're talking a little bit about a few of the things in there that you may want to think about between now and the time we try to adopt that. So, the first thing we had in our agenda, or in the ordinance, under General Provisions, Article 1, I'm sorry, in your ordinance you have the provisions, let's see if I can get back to that page. The first agenda item was the Section 1.7, Creation of a Building Site. We're suggesting that out, that in the, in the recommendation to the council for approval of the zoning ordinance amendments, that you amend your recommendation to remove the 1.7, Creation of Building Site Changes. Those again are related back to the plating ordinance, and they talk in terms of, matter of fact, I think my next slide, no, let me see if I can go back. And that, that is basically coordinating, your existing zoning ordinance has some exemptions to the plating ordinance, and that needs to be in the plating ordinance. We're going to coordinate the two of those and bring them back. So, we're going to focus tonight on just the short-term rentals, if that's okay. And the ordinance recommendation would be approve the sections related to short-term rentals. Yeah, right direction, there we go. So, this is the amendment to the use charts. It's been simplified here for presentation purposes, but basically, where you used to require SUPs for short-term rentals, we've changed that to permitted uses for the short-term rentals. I think that part's pretty straightforward, and I believe you all have discussed this previously, but is there any questions of this? It just removes the requirement for an SUP and it makes it a permitted use, subject to the, the conditions we're going to go over in a moment. So, with that, we, we, you have three sections under the supplemental provisions and standards, and I'm going to generalize the changes to those sections. The first generalization in all three sections, dealing with the bed and breakfast, the short-term rental commercial, and the short-term rental hosted. The, the, we clarified that all, the building codes basically say a bedroom has to have 70 square feet, and we've clarified that to say all bedrooms must have at least 70 square feet for the first person, and 50 square feet for each additional member, or as permitted by the International Building Code. So, that'll qualify it some. There's a certain, you're required to have a certain number of outlets per wall, except you're not required to have walls, so the building code's got its own parameters. Any questions on that particular provision?
If you have a couple staying in a room, it needs to be 120 square feet?
That would be correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Or, or as provided by the building code.
Okay.
What is the National Building Code?
It's the International Building Code. The part that's about this would be the, the commercial part of the building code. All cities but Houston and Austin and Texas are under the International Code. They have the Uniform Code.
So, do you know what square footage they recommend?
They actually say 70 square feet for the first person.
Okay.
Or 70 square feet. We've added the 50 square feet, but we qualify that by saying, "or as permitted by the building code."
So, it'll basically knock out the people with a 10 by 10 bedroom. You know, and most of them, especially the older houses are there.
10 by 10 would be 100 square feet, correct, yeah.
Right.
So, but...
I mean, we have a lot of little, older, little cottages, bungalows around the square that maybe, sorry, may not fit that criteria.
Okay.
And then who, who's measuring it? I mean, so, I mean, I know that, when they give us their floor plan, I don't think it has dimensions currently when we see them. And then, you have to, I mean, it just doesn't seem very enforceable. I mean, how are we going to know if there's one or two people and it's supposed to be 70 or 120? I don't know. Maybe give us a little bit more history as to why that is. I, I don't see it enforceable, for one thing, but I do think there's some small little houses with bedrooms that may only be, like Granton said, 10 by 10.
The 50 square feet came from other standards, Department of Health, Human Resources, and others, that talk in terms of how many people you can have in a bedroom. If you don't qualify it, then it basically says in 70 square feet, you could have six people. I know you can't, but, so it's, it's your call. This is zoning, so it would tend to supersede the building code. There was some concern about not having walls. We originally started that you had to have some walls, and that was deleted. So, there would more, it would be closer to matching the building code. So, we can set it at 70 square feet, or as permitted by the International Building Code, and just leave it at that. That would take it back strictly to the building code as written.
Well, Madam Chair, this doesn't actually make sense to me. I mean, it says 70 square feet for the first person, 50 square feet for each additional person, or as permitted. That ought to say as permitted by the International Building Code.
Well, the 50 square feet is in addition to the building code.
So, are we, if I come, so it's or as permitted by the International Building Code, or 50 feet, which one is it?
Minor standing is the way it would be worded. It's 70 square feet as permitted by the International Building Code, and it doesn't discuss how many people. So, we were attempting to put a standard in here as to how many people could actually be in a bedroom.
Can I suggest that perhaps after 50 square foot for each additional person, there should be a comma, maybe? And then the or? So, that would capture the, the International Building Code controls both 50 square feet and 70 square feet?
Or just strike the 70 square, I mean, the 50 square feet.
Why would we put something in there that would be clearly unenforceable? I mean, how are we going to know how many people are sleeping in these bedrooms?
This is quite commonly put into these kind of ordinances because you, I know for a fact that MHMR, they can go into any house they want, and they've had big issues with people putting three and four people in every room, including the dining room and the kitchen.
But doesn't, doesn't that standard go...
So, this is an attempt to address that.
But doesn't that standard go above the, the International Building Code?
It goes above the International Building Code, but doesn't go above what most people are putting in their ordinances on short-term rentals. It's pretty standard. We were trying to bring it back to the International Building Code, so if you want to leave it more lenient, we could just strike the 50 square feet. It'd be your call.
So, what is it, our say now, we have so many bedrooms, but don't we have a limit on people too, in our current permitting?
Right, in our current permitting, we have a limit on, on two people per bedroom, and we have a maximum number of bedrooms per the short-term or bed and breakfast type. Through administration of our current code, we had a administrative decision that had to be made from the administration of a request for a permit that led to the International Building Code with 70 square feet as a minimum size on the bedroom itself. So, we already had the, the two people per bedroom, yes.
I looked up the definition on the IBC, it's 4.04.4.1. It just says, "Every bedroom shall contain not less than 70 square feet, and every bedroom occupied by more than one person shall contain not less than 50 square feet of floor area for each occupant thereof."
So, it would make, makes it 100 total.
Thank you. Save me.
That makes more sense.
I mean, I guess that could be construed then, if there's more than...
We need to rephrase.
One person, that means it's, is that 70 plus the 50, or 50 plus the 50?
50 plus the 50.
So, it's 100.
Yeah.
I would think a typical bedroom could at least be a 10 by 10.
Right.
Why wouldn't we just mimic that standard?
We can do that.
It's 404.4.1 of the IBC that I was reading from.
I'm familiar with the building codes, but I'm not an expert on it, so we can coordinate that with a building official. So, you're saying it's, you've got to have at least 70 square feet, or 50 square feet per person?
Would you read it once more time, Mr., one more time, Mr. Hallman?
It says, "Every bedroom shall contain not less than 70 square feet, and every bedroom occupied by more than one person shall contain not less than 50 square feet of floor area for each occupant thereof."
For each occupant. We can make that amendment and word it that way. So, all bedrooms must have at least 70 square feet for the first person, and 50, and at least 50 square feet for each occupant.
If more than one.
If more than one, yeah.
I think what he's saying is it's 100 square feet for two people.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
Still not enforceable.
Are they having onsite inspections of this, or is this just on the good faith of someone submitting their plans with measurements?
Well, the fire marshal has the authority to check occupancy loadings, and I would assume code enforcement does too, since these are, these are going to be licensed. But it's a little bit of an awkward situation, and the International Code, I was surprised does not require walls for a bedroom. So, and I don't know if there's a line painted on the floor, how they handle that, so.
So, on the, the floor plans, the floor plans that we've seen through our public hearings are, are part of the SUP, right? That's what you guys have been seeing. And the idea behind that is to capture the number of bedrooms. And then when we look at the permit, which is through building inspections and routed to community development, we look at the size of the, the areas that they're designated.
You do what?
We look at the size of the floor, the floor area.
Okay.
Of what they're designated, yeah.
I think 100 is a...
So, if I, if I might format a change of wording for y'all, all bedrooms must have at least 70 square feet, and at least 50 square feet per occupant, or as permitted by the International Building Code. And that'll get you your cover.
I don't think you need or, they're just as permitted by the International Building Code.
We're pretty much in line with the building, with the International Building Code with that.
That's not what they say.
I don't even know if that's required, really, but...
All right. That change is easily made.
Any other questions on that part before he moves on, Commission? No questions, we can move on.
The second major change to all of this is, anything that references a specific use permit has been deleted, so you'll find those changes throughout the three sections, because those permits are no longer required. I think that covers the majority of the changes. We, you know, we can look at individual ones here, but most of the rest of them are, are minor changes. For example, you know, it does require a dimensioned floor plan of a proposed bed and breakfast or short-term rental, but it doesn't say what happens with those, so we've added the language, "must be submitted within the applications for required permits," just to clarify what you do with, with that particular document. And I think the rest of it's pretty well-covered. Item, what is that, 18F, I believe it is, was pointed out, and rightfully so, that we struck that because it talks, but in terms of a short-term rental is proposed to be located in a single-family attached structure, that you had to get the permission of the adjacent common wall person, and there is a provision in the, in the case law that you can't delegate the authority of zoning to adjacent property owners unless the state statute lets you. So, we struck that, and then if you go on further, in another place, it says that it's only allowed in the historic overlay HBO and HCO districts, so that, that covers it.
So, my question was, can you put that up on the...
That graph?
That, on the screen, or that slide that shows that? My question was...
I don't have the slide that says that.
Okay, so then what happens to the part that is in the historic preservation and the overlay district then, in, in the multifamily? I know the...
Could you go back to the graph that showed the, the permitted parts?
Sure.
Because we kind of went through that, and I had, saw something, and I was going to address it later, but, that one, yeah. Oh, okay, I got you. So, the short-term rental commercial is now in the CBD. I saw the, the CBD up in the, under the residential and hosted is Xed Out, so it was like, that kind of caused confusion. Yeah, okay.
So, going back to the, the duplexes in the, that share a common wall, in the town homes, so you don't, I see where you struck that, but then what happens to the ones that are, that are townhomes or duplexes that are in the HBO or the historical district? Do they still have to have sign-off? I couldn't quite tell from what you were putting...
No, they do not.
Nobody has.
Not from the adjacent property owners.
Okay, on, any of these?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, with the change, F is no longer needed because it's covered by J, it's covered more clearly with J.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, we struck the letter of support, and then you pointed out that that was, made a redundant from the other one.
Mr. Farmer, I cheat, I've been working on it for months.
So...
So, Commission members basically have already figured this out. I mean, we've, we've been seeing tons and tons of, you know, SUPs, and the state laws position on them is if they pretty much meet all the requirements of our ordinances, and they meet all the parking and all that, that it's just become just almost like a, not ministerial, but we can't say no, really. We could say no, but we really don't have anything but case law that the laws, the state is telling us we can really stand on. So, this is a way to just basically, just permit them, so we won't see them anymore. So, that's kind of where, don't everybody jump up and start yelling and screaming that you're so excited, but this is, I know we see a lot of them, but, anyway.
Well, and if, if there's additional things that need to be added to the ordinance later, those are simply added. You know, if you discover that the, the parking requirement or something else needs to be amended, or screening needs to be amended, that's easily done. The hard part is if you, under new statutes, if you took a permitted one and tried to make an SUP out of it, you probably have to send notice to everybody in the city. So, it gets real awkward if you try to be more restrictive on these districts, so...
Any other questions for staff or Mr. Farmer on the part about the short-term rentals? So, needless, I, so sorry, we needed to, this was a public hearing, we need to open the public hearing and see if we have anybody that would like to speak from the public on this. If not, do you want to go ahead, go ahead, Kira, and just vote on this one?
Yeah, let me just finish this up, and then we'll go from there. So, we've covered all that, the things, oops, went too far. We still need to look at the short-term rental definitions and parking standards, and we're going to bring those back to you in January, now that we've got this established. And then also, there's a section at the start that we're recommending be deleted from the, the ordinance being proposed, which deals with plating, it's called Creation of a Building Site. And with that, I'll just kind of jump into the plating provisions. I mentioned the one in zoning. In the plating ordinance itself, there, the, there's the standard, supplemental standards for land uses. Oh, I'm pushing the wrong button again. What is it, I'll get ahead of this thing. Okay, the Creation of a Building Site, your, your plating ordinance is very restrictive in allowing permits for building sites, and, and, I'm sorry, this, this is the wording in the zoning ordinance. What we're recommending is language that just says, "You can't issue a building permit for a building on unplatted property unless it's in accordance with the subdivision ordinance." So, it just coordinates back to subdivision ordinance. Following this in your current ordinance, you've got about four exemptions that a person wouldn't know to go look in zoning to find the exemptions to plating requirements, and so we'll coordinate those exemptions and make sure they're covered in the plating ordinance So, I wanted to give kind of an overview of the subdivision ordinance changes. Section 1.5 is when the plat's required. We're going to recommend some exemptions, and I'll show them to you in a second. And then Sections 2.4, 2.5, 2.6, 2.7, 2.8, 2.9, those deal with preliminary plat, a final plat, an amending plat, a minor plat, a development plat, and replating. So, just to refresh everybody's memories, the preliminary plat is, you don't record it at the courthouse. And, and we've got some recommended changes on that section in addition to some administrative approval ones. The final plat, of course, is the one, the one that most people use, where you record it and sell off lots, and it's for bigger developments and those sorts of things. An amending plat is a, is a very handy mechanism, and we're recommending more and more people use it, because there's 11 different criteria for using an amending plat. And currently, your ordinance allows an amending plat to be approved by staff, and usually it's something to the effect of it's changing a mistake, or it's, it's correcting a bearing or something. But it also has provisions if, if you're, you can create up to four lots that don't, that already front on a public street kind of thing. So, it's a very simple way to process a plat. A minor plat is, is for land that hasn't been platted yet, so you're not amending the previous plat. And on a minor plat, that also, in the past, cities were authorized to have administrative approvals of that. Your ordinance did not, it required it to go through you and the city council, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Development plats is, is an interesting animal, because that's in the, that's out in areas where they're exempt usually. You have a five-acre exemption from plating inside the city limits, and typically, cities will require a development plat, which you do, and that is not a recorded plat, and you can't sell land off, but it requires you to, to, you know, map where all the buildings are and where everything sits. And then the final one is replating, and this is a long process where you take an existing lot and you divide it up into more lots, and obviously, minor plats and amending plats are exempted from replating law. But the replating law on residential lots is pretty complicated, and you have to send notice to everybody and those sorts of things. So, that's the overall framework. Now, the very first thing that we're trying to do in here, and this is the one we really want to visit with you about, is change all of these plats to say, the new, the new state law that was passed in May and became effective September 1, said that a city council could delegate approvals of any plat, not just amending and minor plats, to staff, okay? The wording we have come up with here is basically, any plat may be approved by the Director of Community Development and the Public Works Director. You've got to have both approvals, provided that it meets all the requirements of the ordinances, and that they don't need any variances or waivers or modifications. That would allow someone to bring in any plat, and if they meet all the requirements and they don't need a variance or an exception or anything, it could be approved by staff and subject to the signatures of the Director of Community Development and Public Works Director, it could be recorded at the courthouse. It goes on, we'd go on to say, and the old wording is the one, the stuff in white, it used to say that any of those plats had to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. So, the new wording would say if, if the, if the directors chose not to approve a final plat or recording plat, which is all those others are a record plat, or if you need variances or waivers or modifications or any of those things, then you would have to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council and use the regular process. We wanted to bring this to you. This could save about 30 to 60 days on the approval of a lot of the plats. Also, the shot clock still applies, but a staff is much more able to approve something within the 30 days, or give them a checklist of what's missing. So, this would really expedite plating in Granbury, Texas. So, we visited about the idea that the Planning and Zoning Commission would probably want to keep up with plats and what was being approved, and we thought there should, could be a process, your chairperson brought this up, there could be a process that, where included in your packet, you know, any plats that were approved for informational purposes or something like that, just to keep you up to speed on what was going on in the city. So, is there any questions on this concept? It's, it's, it's new and different. Now, you already have this process in place on an amending plat, so it's, it's the same wording that you use for amending plats right now.
So, Commission members, again, this is kind of similar to the, the stuff that we get that's meets all the requirements, so it's just ministerial approval for us, so it's going to take that function...
Burden off.
Yeah, off us, which even if we disprove it, if it's ministerial and we don't move on it, it still passes within a certain amount of days, I understand by state law. Craig, I have a question on the variances. Is that any variance that generates, that will trigger it, any single variance will trigger it to go to planning and zoning, or City Council, or are there certain variances that we can, that can be approved by staff?
The statute is not clear on that. It just says you can delegate approval to staff. So, if we can figure out which variances staff could approve, we could clarify that. You hate to put in an ordinance, the more substantial variances have to go to y'all, because, you know... hate to put in an ordinance, the more substantial variances have to go to y'all because, you know, what's substantial? But if we can come up with some criteria, perhaps we could handle that.
Yep. One variance that comes to mind is not improving the street to urban standards when it's a state-maintained road, like Weatherford Highway or 377. If we could just automatically approve those, because we're going to approve them every time.
And 144, I might add. We have a lot of state highways crisscrossing us, so that's a really relevant thing that I would think that would not need to trigger, or we would be able to say that that does not trigger going to P&amp;Z and council. Trying to think of some of the other ones that we see frequently.
That's a big one. I think sidewalks are already covered by that DRC provision, but...
Right. You don't have to put the sidewalk to urban standards.
You know, we could insert a few things in there. I did the El Paso ordinance, you know, they were requiring people to put curb and gutter and finish out the street on individual lots. They were in the middle of a neighborhood that didn't have that. And so one of the things we put in there was if the majority of the block face does not have curb and gutter and, you know, has bar ditches, that you did not have to install it also on your part. That might be another example. Almost the same as the state highway, it's just that the neighborhood's not improved.
I think maybe just do a little bit of research in what frequently variances come up that are, you know, similar to what Mr. Hayes has mentioned. If there's some that we can't, you know, remember since we don't have them right before us tonight.
I think we see a sewer line won quite a bit, too, from the city engineer, if I remember correctly.
But most of the time, doesn't that say at such time that those sewer and water lines come near that or cross that property or come near that they agree to put them in? At least, I thought that's kind of what it said sometimes.
Right. So currently, we're seeing a good number of those due to the moratorium. But we can do some research to projects prior to the moratorium and see what types of variances we were getting prior.
We still have to... One of the things we want to do is spend a lot more time with the other department heads, so we can ask them to help us, you know, figure the ones that come up quite often, that they would be amenable to having staff approve. Sometimes it's, sometimes it's a word that doesn't cost the city any money, but some of these actually theoretically cost the city money even though it's going to get approved. But we can, we can take a look at that when we come back. I've got four good examples right there already. Another one, streetlights. We did that one in the El Paso ordinance.
Yeah, that's one.
If there weren't any streetlights, you know, don't make one person run a streetlight all the way down there to put one in. So those are some of the exemptions that come up sometimes.
I'm sure as we progress through this process, if we do this conversion over, we may, some tweaking may need to be added to that.
Absolutely.
If we commonly keep seeing them coming back to city council and planning, zoning for the same variance, then maybe we can tweak it.
The good news about plating is it's a lot easier to tweak those standards because they're not in zoning, so you don't have to do, you got to notice in the public hearing. And that reminds me, your ordinance doesn't, state statute doesn't require public hearings on plats except for a replat. But your ordinance has some places where it wasn't required, some places where it was. So staff, in order to be safe, quite often, you know, just said it was a public hearing. We're making sure that those sections clearly say that, you know, a public hearing is not required. So we clarified that language. Okay, so we've got those notes. Now, in terms of where a plat is required, your ordinance, and there were quite a few complaints with the folks I talked to and some council members about having to plat in situations where someone just wanted to add a small building or make an addition to the structure. We are, I'm paraphrasing it here, and this, it's in more detail in the ordinance that you received. So basically, we're saying plating is not required for remodeling, you know, to remodel a structure, you don't have to plat. It's also not required for building permits for additions. We're saying on residential ones, up to 50% of the house, you know, you have an existing house that got annexed and wasn't platted, and you can add up to 50% of the house without having to plat it, which the plating also triggers the curb and gutter and the sidewalks and paving the street and everything else. On a commercial building, we reduce that to 25% of the existing structure. There's nothing scientific about those numbers. It's kind of paraphrasing your nonconforming statute in zoning. Adding an accessory building, we just said if you already have a main structure, you can add an accessory building without having to plat. A plat starts at about $10,000 and goes from there. So that's quite a bit of money just to add an accessory building. We also, I've put this in other cities where you have an agricultural piece of property or residential, and somebody wants, somebody owns the lot next door and they want to put an accessory building on the lot next door. We've inserted in the ordinance that if it's the same owner, they can do that. You know, in other words, they own the lot next door and they want to put the garage on that lot, and the house is still on this lot. So they could be exempt from plating. Then the final one is surprisingly, if someone has, you know, something happens to the building and it almost burns down, there's difficulty issuing the permit without requiring the plat. So you've annexed a house into the city, it's not platted, and, you know, part of it burns down, and you want to treat it like a nonconforming use and put, you know, repair it back to what it was without requiring plating. So those should reduce a lot of the complaints that you all have been hearing about, you know, you require a plat to do anything, you know, I can't even add on to my building without having to plat the building, or can't add a swimming pool. That's a common one that comes up in cities. That, you know, I want to add a swimming pool, which technically is a structure, and the house is already there, so it's not platted. It was annexed that way or however it got there. And so you could add a swimming pool without having to plat the lot. So can I answer any questions on that concept? And again, we're not proposing this tonight. Another issue in many cities, your ordinance was kind of said it both ways. Some cities say you absolutely have to have a preliminary plat in order to get a final plat. We're clarifying that to say that the only time a preliminary plat is required is where the Director of Community Development determines that it's needed in order to approve the final plat, or if there's going to be phases. I've had agendas where the preliminary plat was the next thing on the agenda, and right after that was the final plat, same night. Why go through the expense of the preliminary plat when you're going to go ahead and put the final plat on the same agenda? So it provides a mechanism to where the preliminary plat can be avoided if they're willing to go straight to final plat.
Can you give an example of when you would even need the preliminary plat?
Well, the biggest example is when you're doing phases. You want to know what the entire property's going to look like when they get done, but they're only going to do this part here. So that's the best example. Sometimes, they don't know what they're going to do with the rest of it, and you still get a preliminary plat that shows the balance of the property, just nothing there. The other one, though, is a developer, you know, will probably want to come in and say, "Look, I don't want to spend the money to do all my detailed engineering. I need to make sure this layout's going to work, and so I'll give you the conceptual engineering and the conceptual lot layout, and if it looks good, then you guys can approve it." And that basically authorized them to spend the big dollars and get the final engineering and plat done. So some places have gone to where it's up to the developer. They just get to do it if they want. If they don't need it, then they go straight to final plat. But it can be a good mechanism for a developer to find out if that layout's going to work or not.
So when do you get your drainage approved, then? Does that all come with the final plat?
Typically, what they'll do is they'll give you some preliminary drainage plans, just showing where the water's going to go and what they think, how they think it's going to be handled.
When you say give, they give it to staff? Is that what you mean?
Not to staff, it's part of the preliminary plat. So, as usual. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Farmer, the second bullet here says a preliminary plat will expire after one year with some possible extensions. How does that work for a phase development, where it may be five or 10 years before all the phases are built? Wouldn't that preliminary plat need to live throughout all those phases?
The, I'm glad you asked that question. Let me go to that. I've got it here. The way we're addressing that, your current ordinance, well, first of all, a preliminary plat expiring six months after you approve it, you know, that can be a little bit awkward. So it's good for one year, but then it expires at the end of one year if you haven't, if you have not taken it to the next level and applied for a final plat of some sort. What typically happens is most cities will allow more than that one extension. We're proposing it could be up to three extensions. Let's see, where is that language? Here we go. The way it's worded in your ordinance was it's up to, it's up to three six-month extensions may be granted by the Development Review Committee, provided that a written request for an extension is signed and filed by the subdivision prior to the expiration. But it also includes any previous extensions. So, you know, if you get a six-month extension, then that six-month, then the, if you get one six-month extension, you have 180 days till it expires. If you get two, not 180, a year plus six months, 18 months, thank you. So if you get two extensions, you have 24 months before it expires. So that's, that is how that is handled. One of the reasons for doing that is the vesting statutes say you can't change the rules for two years on them anyway. The vesting statutes also go on to say that they're vested until the project is completed. So it says the validity of the preliminary plat should be extended two years from the approval of a final plat of any portion of the approved preliminary plat. So you get a little piece approved here, final plat, and the rest of it's good for two more years after that.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation.
So it does clarify in your ordinance.
But it's vested even longer than that, is what you're saying? Because, I mean, I can, for instance, Harbor Lakes, those phases that just, the last phase that just ended were many, many years after Harbor Lakes started. I mean, so we had to have something in our ordinance to allow that to happen in the past because they did the same thing. They had platted it, and then the final, they kept coming in phases. And that phase is much more than this 18, which is 18, two and a half years.
Yeah. Part of the language I'm going to, we'll be bringing back to you, and we'll make sure, but right now, it's the, it's the two years, it's extended two years and additional years, provided the project is determined to be no longer vested. So that, if it's vested, that approval can be for even longer. Those are the vesting statutes. So the vesting statutes typically say something to the effect of, you know, your approval is, or the, I'm sorry, the codes that you develop under can't be changed for two years. And then if they're making substantial progress, it goes up to five years and perhaps even beyond. So that's into the state law. So we coordinate back with the state law. So it's two years if you've lost vesting, if that makes sense. Okay. I think... Voting options. Oh, that's you, not me. But again, the recommendation would be to approve the zoning ordinance amendments, except for that one, section 1.7, which is related to creation of a building site, I believe was the language on it.
But we also, on that zoning ordinance, the, he's recommending with the change to the...
Subject to the amendments we discussed, yes, ma'am.
That we talked about, yes. All right. This doesn't sound like it's picking up.
The revision of the size of the bedroom and the deletion of item F, 18F.
Hey, Craig or Kira, so the recommended approval, what you have up there is, can you state the part that you're pulling out again, the actual section, please?
It is. I've got too many papers running around here. Yes, it's deleting the section regarding Article 1, section 1.7, creation of a building site. We'll delay that for the plating amendments.
Article 1, section 1.7?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Kira, did you need to add anything?
I think we would also consider your conversation about the International Building Code.
Yeah, that's that definition of a bedroom, as revised.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Craig's commission members? Mr. Farmer, any questions for Kira for staff? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the ordinance, zoning ordinance amendment for short-term rental, residential... I'm not sure if I got all this. The first option that's on your page in front of you on your screen. So with the exception of Article 1, section 1.1.7.
Sorry.
Richard, you want to attempt it?
No.
Chair, I'll move. We approve the zoning ordinance amendment for short-term rental, residential, short-term rental, commercial, bed and breakfast, hosted regulations, excluding section 1.7, and including the amendments that we previously discussed, specifically dealing with bedroom size and removing 1.1 from the last section on short-term rentals.
Second.
Second by Mr. Erdman. Do I have a, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now I'll entertain a motion to vote to continue the subdivision ordinance proposal.
So moved.
Have a motion, motion by Mr. Hayes to continue the subdivision ordinance through the January meeting, and have a second by Mr. Hallmond. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
If I might suggest that section 1.7 of the zoning ordinance also be continued to that meeting, so you don't have to re-advertise it.
Okay. So, do you want us to redo what we just, or just added?
Well, I think you could just say section 1.7, Article 1, section 1.7, the zoning ordinance be continued.
My motion was intended to include that. Does that cover it?
Works for me. Sorry.
Right. That's for the record, what Mr. Hayes had.
What Mr. Hayes said, you might also clarify for all of the membership, that they agree to that?
That we are continuing until the January meeting the revisions proposed for Article 1, section 1.7?
Yes, ma'am.
Will we continue to then? And that is included as in Mr. Hayes' motion?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to D2 tonight. Consider the request of NICS, oh, wow, I may butcher this one, Uwana Witch, for Pacific use permit for trailer sales, use, and heavy commercial zoning. The property's address is 4325 East Highway 377. Cody?
Good evening, Ms. Chair and Commission. This is going to be a public hearing for a SUP to allow for trailer sales at this property located at 4325 East Highway 377. It is platted as lot, two block five of the Eastwood Village. It is zoned, heavy commercial, and it did have two prior SUPs for similar retail or sales uses within trailers, boats, heavy trucks and trailers, similar type sales. This is the proposed site plan. Do you have any questions about this one?
No.
Just going to let you all look at it and see if you had any, any questions. It's showing the parking to be for the trailers on the east drive-through of the Circle Drive, and then the ingress egress on the west side of the Circle Drive. And there is a office building on the... And there is a office building on the south side with parking out front.
Is that a mobile office or a permanent?
It's a mobile office. It's a nonconforming mobile office. It's been there for quite some time, looking at Google, Google Maps. For our SUPs, is the use harmonious and compatible with the surrounding? Yes, the property is zoned heavy commercial and the property to the east and the west are also zoned heavy commercial. The property to the north across 377 would be Progressive Powersports, which is also heavy commercial. The activities requested by the applicant are normally associated with this use. The business plan and the using the property to bring clients in and at or using space to display the trailers is yes. And then trailer sales is considered a reasonable use with this location, and it would not have any impacts to the surrounding areas. This is our typical zoning ordinance for the SUP regulations. It's on the front edge with commercial businesses surrounding the property. The site is already developed and they would occupy the existing space. The planning and zoning may recommend additional conditions with this, and it is going to have a one-year term limit attached to the SUP, which when that ends, he can come back and reapply for a continuance of the SUP. Mailed out notices went to 13 people surrounding and one letter in favor did come back. Staff recommends approval for the SUP for trailer sales with the one-year term for the applicant, and they can apply for another one once a one-year term is complete. All operations and improvements shall conform with the site plan. The SUP is subject to all other city codes and requirements, permits, and periodic inspections. Voting options for tonight, recommend approval of the SUP, subject to conditions as presented. Recommend approval of the SUP with modified conditions or recommend denial of the SUP.
Thank you, Cody. Open the public hearing and are you the applicant, sir, at the podium?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to speak? I mean, would you, or just answer questions?
I'll answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant staff? Mr. Moore?
Hello. Is this going to be for display use only? Did I hear?
Well, there's going to be a display area for the trailers, but I am planning on selling them on the property as well.
Okay. Okay. What type of trailers are there?
Utility trailers, travel trailers, landscape trailers, ATV trailers, enclosed cargo trailers.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Any questions for staff? Thank you, sir. If no other questions, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the specific use permit request.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve with the conditions, right?
I'll second.
Subject to the conditions presented, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
By Mr. Moore and a second by Mr. Erdman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There'd be no further business, the meeting is adjourned, and everyone have a Merry Christmas.